See the flash, right?
Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We're calling the meeting order at seven oh three P M. We're gonna get started with our pledge allegiance. You're welcome to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the three public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, will never be just.
We'd like to welcome our student representatives from second school, and I understand we'll be hearing from Paul as well. We have Principal Lisa pushing on the first on the zoom. Hi Lisa, thank you. And we've got some friends here in the audience. Hi, are you guys ready? Okay, cool.
Let me put your stuff up, guys, give me any sign things. You guys are also around? Okay, here you go. Who's first? Alright.
Came back to center school on December sixteenth for picture readings.
We had winter spirit day, December sixteenth through December twenty.
You gotta go to those days. Look at those days. Look at those days.
We have.
Oh, you're all nice. Good job, Em. You're next.
Monday, December sixteenth was where? Where your favorite planner or holiday sweater day?
Monday, December sixteen was where you?
Yeah, who are you? Sorry. No, then it's huge.
Yeah.
Tuesday, December seventeenth was where winter white or candy cane struggles day.
Wednesday, December eighteenth was where your favorite holiday outfit?
Thursday, December nineteenth was where your favorite hat or scarf day?
The Grinch even made a guest appearance right before dismissal on Friday, December thirtieth.
I think there's a picture of that somewhere, so.
Yeah, that was supposed to be that part.
There you go. Read that one now.
Friday? Friday, December twentieth was? Where your favorite holiday pajamas day. Also, third graders built gingerbread. All the skills they learned in math, they use empty milk cartons as a basis for their houses, then? Painted them with red, green, or white frosting and used different types of candy? And cereal to decorate them.
Did you guys know that my mother was a first grade teacher? And I, she used to do that at center school, and I did it as a kid as well at our house.
Really?
Bring home empty milk cartons, and we had built gingerbread houses every year.
That's cool. Who's doing that?
Do your Grinch one now. There's your Grinch one. Do you want us to scroll through it?
Yeah.
Okay. Scroll through it. So there's your Grinch. Okay, here's your next one.
Okay. Welcome, Miss G. She is Mr. Phillips' student teacher for the next seven weeks. She is finishing her degree in health and P E from Eastern. And will graduate in May.
Thank you.
Alright.
Just my level of sharing and the support. Good job. That's awesome.
Are you guys gonna watch? You wanna watch the whole school one?
Yes.
It's gonna be useful.
Let me.
Miss Randall. First time, I think she got a shout out like that before. That's exciting. She must be famous.
Share some. Here. Okay. There we go.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I would like to share some important dates regarding our academic calendar. The second quarter officially ends on January twenty-second, giving students and teachers time to wrap up assessments and projects. Report cards for this quarter be available on February third, allowing families to review student progress and achievements.
Staff and students love dressing up for spirit days. This spirit day is called ugly sweater day. It was right before winter break. These are some pictures of what staff and students wore to school for ugly sweater day. Some staff and students even did more than just ugly sweaters.
On December twelfth, the seventh and eighth grade band played Sleigh Ride and Feast of Stefan, and the jazz band played Sunday Afternoon and Monkey See Monkey Do. The fifth and sixth grade band played Celtic Christmas and Jangle Sleigh Ride.
Oh, a little buffering. Don't mind us. Amen to that. Let's try it. This is a huge file. Pause. This one escaped for a second. Please pause. Drag it back for a second. So you guys get to do the rest of it.
Do any of you play instruments or something?
I do.
Do you tell me about your instrument?
Uh, I play percussion. It's really fun. Like tomorrow morning, we, the whole band goes together and practices. It's noisy.
And why about you, fellas?
Uh, I do clarinet.
The squeaks. Nope. The squeaks of clarinet.
Alright, let's see if we got it here. Hold on.
The eighth grade had a can drive on Saturday eleventh from nine to twelve to raise money for their annual trip to Washington, D C. Many participated and a lot of cans were donated.
The boys' basketball team had an amazing start for this year and are five and O with their record, beating Wyndham, Stafford, and Bowlin by more than twenty points. We also beat Coventry by thirteen. So far, we are number one in the league and are playing Mansfield this upcoming Monday. We are also playing STEM this upcoming Thursday, leading us to only have five more games this season.
The girls' basketball team has had a pretty good start to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five winter season. We've had two scrimmages in three games. We won one scrimmage against Stafford and lost our second scrimmage against Coventry. We have won two out of three games so far, and we have five more left to play. Our best game so far was against Bolton. The score was twenty-four to seventeen. We have also beat Wyndham and Stafford. Our upcoming games are against Mansfield, STEM, Columbia, Stafford, and Lebanon.
On December eleventh, we held our highly anticipated chorus concert, which was a wonderful way to celebrate the season and showcase our hard work. We performed varieties of songs, including Encanto, Loyi Segoi, Hey, and Warm and Fuzzy. Each chosen to highlight different vocal ranges and harmonies. Our chamber students also had the opportunity to shine their performances. The audience was incredibly supportive, and it was a fantastic evening filled with music, teamwork, and holiday spirit. Thank you and have a great night.
Go Falcons.
I will tell you, I was watching the game as I was prepping for tonight. The boys were at home, and I see the scoreboard, and it was thirty to two.
That is a ridiculous high school.
I watched, and it was like three-pointer, wide open, three-pointer. It was pretty impressive. If you have a chance to go and see them, go and see them.
Coventry had twenty, and we got one point. It was like.
It happens.
That was a point. That was a point.
So you guys, you know, you don't have to pay for us to meet, so thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
For bringing me.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you all. Okay, so we use our musicians, our athletes, our, our spirit folks, bringing our community together with our spirit days, and then? Um, a student teacher. That's really great that we get to share some of our experience with a budding educator like that. Alrighty, speaking of spirit, here she is. Drum roll. Let's hit it. How it's happening with the P T A?
Everything is good. I don't have much today, which is a surprise, but I did just wanna say, um, we did have our holiday shop at, um? At Center and Hall, and that was a great success, but really, to me, the great success is just watching the kids have so much fun picking out gifts for their loved ones. Um, so thank you so much, C E S and H M S, for allowing us to have the holiday shop for the kiddos. Um? Let's see, um, are, we were at the Band and Chorus. We had a concession stand, and, um? We were able to donate three hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents to Band and Chorus, um, for their end of year trip. So that is super exciting. We love hosting concessions, and we always, um, give fifty percent of concessions to Band and Chorus as well as a hundred percent donations, um? As well. So that is super awesome. Thank you guys all so much for helping out with that, those of you who came to see us at the concession stand. Um? Let's see, we have our coin wars, which we are going to do a Mario Party theme this year. We're super excited about it. Um, we do have the flyer in the digital backpack, as well as we'll be sending it home with kiddos. That is pre K through eight. Uh, it has a little Q R code. We made a cute little video that you guys can show your kiddos. Um, it was just super fun. Um, the Mario characters are going to race around the rainbow road, just like in Mario Kart, so we're hoping the visual, um? Will help, you know, the kids love it. They just love sabotaging other grades. Um, it has a whole rhyme and rhythm, but if anybody has any other questions, let me know. It is going to be the last weekend in January. Um, February, uh, January twenty-seventh through thirty-first. Um, so? There will be more information to come on that. It is also posted in our Facebook group as well. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention is, um, in February, we have our glow party. Usually, it's our family gala. This year, we're gonna try something new and do a glow party at H M S. That's gonna be February twenty-eighth, um? From six to eight, so it's pre K through eight. And yeah, if anybody has any questions, let us know. Um, our email is Wellington P T A at gmail dot com. So thank you guys so much for your time.
Awesome. Thank you so much for all that you do. That's not, that's not nothing. That's not a little list that you just read. Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Wonderful. We are so lucky to have that much. We really are. Okay, um, agenda item five is the chairperson report. I just wanted to welcome everybody to a new calendar year, two thousand twenty-five. It feels kind of funny to say still, but? Here we go. Let's do it. Um, and speaking of getting into things, here comes budget season. I wish I had a song. I'll work on it. We are going to have our first workshop tomorrow at five thirty P M. We're gonna talk about program one, which pertains to Center School. Program two, uh, which focuses on hall, and then program four, um, is about our transportation. We have had some pre-budget conversations during our public meetings, and the last time, some words that came up? Um, regarding our budget and things that we wanna be mindful of, uh, kinda came together, and I just wanted to state them again. Some things that were important to us were predictability, stability, sustainability, and trying our best to be self-sufficient as a board and a group. So as we go forward, I hope that we can kind of keep those things at the forefront. Um, and remember too that we're part of a big community trying to all come together for the best of all of our town's people. So I hope that we'll have a lot of participation this year going into and throughout our budget season. Um, you can find all the information about all the upcoming meetings on town website, so please join us. Email, come to the meetings, ask your questions. We need as much public participation as possible. Um, so things are clear, understood, facts are shared, and, um, we're all moving in the same positive, uh, direction together. Okay, agenda item number six. For those of you who are on the call, um, you can unmute yourself or raise your hand if you wanted to speak up. Okay, I just wanted to say Arthur and Samantha, I see you on there, so. Welcome to come on anytime you wanted to speak up, but as if you were beside us, okay? Alright, um, agenda item eight is the superintendent report. We're gonna start by discussing a little bit about the after-school program and what's going on with that.
Yep, we have a, a, a lot of stuff on the agenda today, so I'm gonna try and move quick on some of these things. Um, the after-school program is moving along. Uh, we're learning as we go, obviously, being the first year, and continue to look to find ways to improve the program. Figuring out how to, you know, put attendance into their, uh, the grant system. All of those things are new, and some of them are? More complex, I think, than they need to be, but that's, we won't complain because it's a grant. Uh, Center School program has twenty-seven students attending regularly, uh, and we have twelve students that come, an additional twelve that come on the half-days. Um, H M S program has eleven students, uh, and an additional two students on half-days. I've never seen eleven students there, but that's what our? Numbers are right now, um, um, on our roster. Um, as our director Kelly navigates the new program, I will tell you that we are stable financially, which is good. Um, and that's between the grant funds and the money that we've brought in into the program. We've collected over twelve thousand dollars in tuition since the beginning of the year. So that little two dollars that we're charging for tuition for some folks is adding up, which is good. Because you probably are going to need it to cover your staffing through the end of the year. Uh, the grant is really close. Um, so we're watching, we have about thirty-five thousand dollars remaining in staffing funds through the grant right now. Um, and we've already spent that amount of money in four months. So I think to get through the end of the year, it's gonna be the grant and what we bring in. When we talk about break even, this is, I think we're gonna be right around that number, which is good. Um, but we'll continue to, to watch that balance, um, through the year and make sure we have enough money to, to, to kind of get through the, the end of the year.
We be getting grants in the future too?
They, we, so once you have it, they just say, put your name in, and supposedly they just? Keep things going. What will be interesting to see is, is our numbers at Hall. I think are low, but they've really pushed. But to have a middle school program, they did, because it's something that they value. Um? I will tell you, I think today, uh, they were doing some of the cricket machine work, and let me tell you, the kids that were at the table doing the cricket machine stuff? Were so engaged in what they were doing. I can't tell you what they were making. Um, I have no idea, but they were super engaged in what they were doing, so, um? I will reapply, and the expectation is yes, that we, we will continue. Were you gonna say something? Okay. Uh, the indoor air quality survey, we're required to complete in indoor air quality. Heard Sharon on the last call, talked about that. We had to do a survey for both schools. Um, both surveys are online. I'll show you what they look like. They are not so exciting. This is an example, and they are long. So it's all this business. This actually goes beyond that. Um, they're on our school website. They're under the district information on the, on the main page. Um, and then each school has their own survey on their own website, so you can go in and look at the, the responses. The survey asked questions about maintenance supplies, um, dust control, leaks, cleaning habits. Uh, waste management, ventilation, pest management, uh, and then some of the food service spaces. The maintenance folks, maintenance meeting Steve and Matt, uh, our maintenance guys, and I filled out the surveys together. Um, and if we needed feedback from like an encore, we got, uh, you know, response. Some of, everybody's required to put the site now. You, you're required just to see it. There's no approval or anything, but just know it's there. If you wanna look through it, um, on your own, and you have any questions about what's checked, and that goes for anybody on, uh, that looks at the meetings. Um, they can contact me, and I can explain what's there. Um, but, you know, it talks about like not having trash near vents that vent into classrooms and things like that. It's just, you know? A lot of it's common sense, but, um, some of it is just like not applicable because we don't have ventilation all over the place, so.
Easy peasy.
Right, so they're both there for, for both schools. If you have any questions, just, just let me know. I will post those and stuff. Share. So, uh, e- exciting week, kind of facetious there. Um, Power School, which I'm sure you heard, which hosts our student operating system, um, they notified us that they had a cyber security? Incident that started in late December. Um, it did include, uh? The, some of the Wellington data, and, uh? We do know? That the, the bad actor was in our, our? What, what do you follow it in our?
Database.
It, it was, we could see that the, the name that had logged in, so we could see it. Now, what they have access to is, is minor. It's things like the demographic data, student, student, um, dates of birth, phone numbers, email addresses, things like that. Um, what Power School told us was they assured that it was contained. They had to hire a third-party outside vendor to? Make sure that they said the same thing. Um, and they also said, which I find is very strange. However, this is what they said, uh, that they had video evidence of, um, and it wasn't, um? Money related. I, it was just they had video evidence of the, the stuff being deleted. They can't guarantee it's never gonna be accessed or put out there, but they believed, uh, they said to us that it wasn't going to be, so I have to go on that. Um, we, some districts put some, uh, I will call high-power stuff on their power school, things like? Credit card payments, uh, credit cards, um, social security numbers. We don't do any of that. So we do have some of ours on third-party systems, but they did not get accessed. Okay, so any of the third-party systems like Link Food Services, things like that, were not accessed. Um? And I did contact our cybersecurity insurance. Uh, I talked to the rep with a novice, uh, uh, rep, and, um? We'll see where it goes. We basically just notified them to say if we have anything big happen, um, as a result of this, which we don't expect. But we had to notify them as part of our plan, so we have a cybersecurity plan, incident response plan, and we used it. So, uh, we're in good shape right now. I didn't, I sent the note, the letter to families. I realized, sorry, Samantha, you're the only person, oh, maybe you don't get them either. Um, I sent the letter to you later afterwards, realizing, oh, there's some people that don't actually get that normal school messenger.
They did get them.
Oh, good. Um, so we'll continue to monitor it. Um, it's just, it's a little frustrating, but? Uh, it was an international thing. It wasn't just Wellington. It was schools all over the country and, and world. Keep going. Questions? Okay. Um? Here's Dataville, okay? So, um? I told you that I would, uh, pull report card data for you. I, I'm? I was back and forth on this about, do I wanna put it on screen, and I decided against it. Um, we have report card data for first trimester for Center School and first quarter for Hall School. Um, there are breakdowns by grade level, and then because the elementary standard base, and I'll walk you through what you have. Um, they have a lot more data or lines. Grade five also uses standard space grades as well. Um, but they don't have as many grades, and then six through eight is like a page. It's, it's, it's that one page. So let me just show you what you're looking at, and I think my thought process is, um? Because this is the first time we're looking at this, uh, we actually, uh, were very intrigued by the data. Um? It's interesting to see how, like, hey, if there's one F or in a class, or what that looks like, and what's going on with that student. Um? But the way this is lined up, as you can see, the kindergarten group there, those are all their standards. When you see a standard written twice, like the? The one that's just slightly down line five, four, or five demonstrates goes through the use of phonological awareness, you can see? There are five kids that have got a grade of two. Um, and you could just go through and look at what the, you know, find those, here are the kids that got a grade three. So that standard's on there twice. You can see where the other kids got, whenever it says grade, that's not the grade level they're in. That's the score. That's how it's reported out of Power School. Okay, so you want to look at and go, how many kids are getting scores in kindergarten at a? Uh, square of two in crash course. One, two, three, and four is a scoring scale. Four is exceeding grade level. Three is on, two is approaching, one is below grade. Okay, so no ones, no fours in kindergarten. If you look at first grade, um, and maybe I sort of these a little bit better for you. Um, you can actually see them right next to each other. So one, two, three, four, so if you look at that first standard, shows understanding of conventional English grammar. There was one. But one, one. Six twos, twenty-six threes, and eight fours. Okay, so it gives you a sense when you go through the standard, and obviously, if there was no? Uh, no three in some standard, or no four, or no one, nobody got that. I just, it was left on. They were all twos and threes. So you can see all of the standards, and when you look at this? Because there was so much data here? I only gave you reading and math for the elementary school. Um, and that was intentional. If this works for you, and you wanna see the art, music, P E, other scores, I can pull those for you. Um, it was just that you already have a stack of paper in front of you. We need a lot of data, and I wanted to make sure? I wasn't just killing trees to show you, um, what it looks like. My thought process is you're gonna, I was gonna explain this tonight. Let you go through it, and then if you wanna come back and ask questions next meeting, that, that would allow you to do that, so that way you have time to go through this. Um? You can see grade one has a lot of standards. Again, reading, writing, and math. You go to grade two, same concept, right? Um? There, the front page and back. We did not give you any effort following directions, any of those, um, kind of soft skill kind of things. Purely academic, reading, writing, and, um, math. Okay? Grade three, you can see there's not as many, uh, standards down. Um, if something came across on a report card is not taught during that trimester, I didn't give that to you. Just not, doesn't make any sense to give you an N T, but you can see all the things that were graded. Um, and the number of kids that received those scores. Uh, grade four is the same. If you flip to grade five? You can see this where, when they did the standards-based report card years ago, they really shrunk down the number of things they're? Scoring on in fifth grade compared to the elementary. Um, a lot of this is because, you know, a lot of the, 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 um, phonological awareness and phonics is, is through. So now you're getting scores in writing development, language convention, speaking and listening, uh, the, the core standard headings. Um, and you can see the breakdown there of, of the number of scores. Now, one thing I wanna tell you, because I know someone's gonna fi- figure it out, and they're gonna go, well, the numbers don't add up though. What I did take out of this is, is there are students who are identified with special education needs? Who have, um, modified curriculum. Their report card says M C because they have an I E P. I took them out? Because you don't need to see where it just says M. It just would say M C. I also don't wanna, uh, identify the number of students? Even though you could probably do the math by figuring something out, okay? Um, so know that if the math, if you take one standard and you're like, well, it says they're supposed to be forty-one, and those are only thirty-seven grades, what'd you do with the other four grades? Please make that assumption, that that's what it is. Okay? Now, grade six, seven, eight, A's through F's? We gave you everything because it was so clean to take off. If not standards, it's like you get an, an L A, L A grade. You get a math grade. So what you're looking at is a number of A's, B's, C's, D's, and F's for grade six, for quarter one, seven, and eight. We did give you in this because it was easier. We gave you the art. We gave you the P E. We gave you the science and social studies. If social studies applied? Um, there are grades in there, and you can see the number of, of, of grades per, for each one. Now? I'm, uh, and I haven't done it yet. Um, because it's budget season, um, but I have this book now to go back. This is actually a new report. They fold for us on the standard side. I could go in the past, we could go kid by kid in the report cards, and we were just looking. and we were just looking, go, okay, ones, twos, threes, get a nice sense, and we go, any kid that had a one, we could have a conversation about. Um, as an admin team or as the uh, principal with staff members. With this now, we're looking at, and I'm gonna pick one off off the table here. I'm looking at grade six, going, there are six As in LA and twenty two Bs. But if you look at that compared to the number of As in the other classes, we wanna know, i- is there a difference there? So that's a conversation now I have an admin, and then they can go back and look at that, because I had not seen this report this way. Um, yeah.
You know what, I think at reading this at the other end, and there are so many assignments in math and language arts.
Yeah.
That they're so much more specific, and there's some, they have to be, the kids have to be so much more accountable.
Yeah.
Um, whereas I think if you, you know, are cooperative and you do a good job and you follow the rules, and then you need the arts. You know, then we might get a better grade.
Yeah, and I I I can't speak to if that's what it is or not. Um, if it's comfort, if it's ability, I, you know, what what it is, I think there's a lot of reasons it could be. This just helps you ask a question a- as an administrator and go, okay. For me, as anytime I look at something like this and I go, I wanna see the Ds and Fs in LA, mountain science, I wanna know who that kid is. I wanna know what we have in place, do we know why they're in that spot? If we do, what have we changed? Have we changed anything? When was the last time it's changed? How was the contact with parents been? All of those things, so we wanna look at all of that data. We just used to look at report cards and go report card by report card. This makes it much easier for me now to ask questions than it did me firing through report cards. Um, and saying, okay, I wanna ask Mary Kay about this kid, I wanna ask Lisa about this kid. So, knowing that, like, you've all seen this before, this is how that report card comes on the elementary side. This is just how it's spitting data now out of Power School. So my question is, is this too much for you? Uh, is this helpful to get a sense like, hey, I I wanna see where we're performing on standards? Um, I will use this data as, you know, so it's not a big deal to run it. Um, like I said, this report wasn't in Power School, and we started asking questions, and they actually found the report for us that would help us run it this way, instead of going from report card by report card. Um, is this helpful for you to look at moving forward?
Honestly, as someone who reads the report cards at home, I have a much harder time on, so I have a harder time with the computer and everything, but only reading it, um, you know, on my phone, which is where I usually under read.
Yeah.
Than I did when I got a piece of paper. Um, I won't go back to it like I would if I went back to paper. Um.
We've had that conversation about doing it and and requiring a si- a signature. We've also talked about requiring a signature online because that's something that we can do, um, that's newer. Um, we can actually, which we do, huh, we can actually log into Power School and see what parents have looked at report cards and which ones have not.
Yeah.
Um, and my response uh, after this report card book for came out for both schools, uh, I made both principals go in, and their office was calling people. Um, I don't know if they got to everybody, I did not follow through back with them, but that's something that's important else, because Power School report card is just one shot during the year. You should not be finding out at that point in time if your child's struggling. You should know from their assignments along the way that holy cow. So the first reports I ran when I ran these report, the 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 report cards, um, Brendan and I actually were looking at data together. Um, because we were both trying to run, run different reports, not finding what we were looking for. We came across first grades, and it was all their assignments just for ELA. And it was a ton of assignments, and you could just look at it and go, you, as a parent, you know very well where your kid's going if you're going to the Power School to look there, that's why it's so important. Do we need to make sure that looks that way for every grade level? Mm-hmm, we do. So I showed you the report card just to make sure you know, you know, kinda how it comes across, there are a lot of standards. But I think this is helpful to give you a sense of, you know, when I talk about reading, you know, when I talk about phon- phonics and and phonological awareness, you know, when I talk about number sense in math, that they're critical. You can find those on here and go, where are you getting? Um, if you want me to take this and shrink it more, and if that's easier, uh, and focus on those two things, I could do that, I'm not sure. I would only wanna do that really on the lower elementary side, because I don't want to, um, as you move up in the grades, it's like, this is important, this is important, this is important, they're all important things, if I just pick one, it's not, I'm not a lot of data.
Thank you, um, this personally, I'm I'm interested in the kind of longitudinal information, so how does this compare to the next report card and then the next report card, and so if there's a way to represent that, that to me is more telling than, I mean, I appreciate this because this is the first thing, this is the first benchmark, right, but, um, like in isolation, continue to go forward in isolation, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know because there's so many standards. The standards, for the most part, are not, not every standard is great every semester, right, or every quarter. Sometimes it's you're you're done with it. Uh, you did it first semester and you're done. Sometimes it's graded every every trimester. The challenge for me is, I don't know how I'd put them next to each other for this. When we did this though, it actually changed how I'm gonna give you your behavior data after tonight. Um, because we're actually gonna put them onto a spreadsheet for you so you can compare month to month. That was something that, as we did this process, like, you know what? We need to just take the the center school data from each month that I've given you this year. Put the infractions, put the number for September in, and then you'll see the number for October and the number for December, it's just trying to figure out the best way to present it. Um, so we'll do that. I don't know, because there are so many data points here on the report card side, Jen, to do that. On things like dibbles, we can do that. On things like, um, if we're doing like a star or, you know, an S back, I can show you those. Um, I'm not sure in big picture how I will show you this, other than, you know, if you wanted to know at the middle school, I think it's easier. Right?
It is true.
Because the chart, I could do it and just say, you know, put them side by side. Are there fewer um, Cs, Ds, and Fs in the second quarter at hall school? The elementary data, again, I didn't give you the uh, the UA classes, because it's pages and pages and pages um, to give you all the data. Unless you ever thought how to put them side by side.
Is this an Excel file? Yeah, this is an Excel file, may I send it please? Like, like a
You do what?
I can clean it up. I can make it look a lot neater, and then I can actually get you to do it side by side.
This is on the, thanks, standards, right?
Yeah, well, I understand that, but if you clean this up, you're gonna notice the standards that are missing from trimester to trimester, because they're not collated up here. But it'll be comparison, will be, will be compared, this is, this'll be fairly easy, you know? Because I would just organize it by standard, and then by grade number, uh, and then by trimester. So essentially, you can see, right, you can isolate the grade number, and then you can column, you can put the columns of your trimester, they're all right next to each other.
I don't know how you added the second trimester though.
You can't give me this data for the second trimester, oh, when it comes out?
Can't, you'd have to al- do align, because it doesn't give you every standard when it fits.
Right, right, but is is the standard, is this, right, is this form identical? When you, with the same standards, yeah, exactly, you'll just find the name.
And just line them up.
Mm-hmm.
And I can do that.
Yeah, that won't be hard.
There's no confidentiality in that, it's just no.
Well, I just took names off, I mean, there's, you know, and we did this by grade intentionally. The first rounds had names in it, and it was, it was too much. This one is just an overall, and it actually gives you a percentage, which is, there's lots of hidden columns in this document. You don't see them on your paper copy, but if that, if you wanna be able to see, like, when I do our spreadsheets, we do it beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, I can easily lump these standards and just make a I'm gonna shorten up so you, or I'm gonna make it a landscape, not portrait, so you can see the the different quarter, the different trimesters. Mm-hmm. If that, if that's what you want, I I definitely can do that by by standard. Will that help you with what you're think, looking at, if you wanna review the data? That's the question, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a time over time, so essentially, you would you would hope that any students that are in two range as the trimesters go on, get into at least the third range, if not the fourth range. And I'd be very easy to see if, yeah, with this data, it'd be very easy to see.
Well, I've had students before who, like, in the first trimester, they had a three because of what we were doing. And then in the last trimester, they did not, like, it moved down because of the difficulty level.
You're not finding it to be useful data though?
It just tells me that the harder material is something that they're still merging with.
Not necessarily, maybe the material's too hard. Maybe they're struggling on a bigger thing, maybe it's not just isolated enough students, that's all, ev- every I know of the, of the mindset, there's every piece of data useful for somebody.
Well, I guess that speaks to a case by case basis then, though, like, if you have, because maybe there's a student who's struggling with the material because it's too hard, and maybe there's another situation where a student has been asked a lot and hasn't had contact with the material, that this does not capture that.
It could. If you're seeing just minor, if you're just seeing minor changes in the in the, in the data, if you're only seeing one or two students go down and the rest are staying level or going, oh, then it's not a class problem, it's a student problem. And that's, that goes back to, to fill up to the staff. But if you're seeing the entire class start out at three and then they dip to a two, that speaks to a a material problem.
Well, I mean, I think, if if we can look at the data and there's, there's an understanding of what we're seeing, like, if you can help us understand what we're seeing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as the fluctuations in the numbers go, I think it would be helpful. Um, I mean, we can sit and hypothesize the entire night about what is happening, but if, you know, it'd be helpful to know what the variations are, if there are significant ones. And I feel like that adds another layer of investigation for you, Phil, to do before our meetings.
I'm not gonna get into those conversations with you at the board level, though, that's really I I think the conversation is like, uh, uh, and look at grade one, right, just take that, um, if you take that standard, the very first one shows understanding conventions in English and grammar. There could be some new content that they don't get, that they, um, I think upon my son, this is like my son. Um, there's things in pre-calc that he just flies through in this, in ACE, and then there's second thing, other things that he just has no idea what's going on. That's just the nature of content, right? Some things in content all fall under pre-calc. Um, and you struggle with some and you get others. You will see on this, and I think it's, that's first standard is lined up exactly like it would be for the column, is your point, Arthur, right? Is that, so we would leave, um, and I don't know that overall total helps you, to be honest with you, I could just hide that column and just put total tr- trimester one, and then trimester two, what you might see there is uh, I'm gonna give you the sense of this is what I would do, use, how I would use the data. Is if I, the kids that are in ones and twos, I wanna know what's going on there. Is that a student intervention? Um, I wanna know who those seven kids are, you're not gonna get into that at the board level. What you would wanna see is, you would hope that that seven turns to five. But that seven also could turn to nine, based upon content. It's, I I I don't know that I wanna get into the reasons, because that's really principal teacher job, like, that's, it's a lot of work of digging in, they have data team meetings just to discuss these things, and to have those reasons for all kids, for every standard, I think is gonna be unreasonable.
I'm not looking for rea- I'm sorry, that's how you, I'm not looking for for us to know the reasons why
You need to just see, right?
It's just a vision.
Mm-hmm.
And be able to point too easily and say, why is there such a dip here, you know? And maybe in the conversation, or we talked about it, and it's something to do with the material.
Well, no, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's not, and I'm certainly not asking for deep dives in individual students, that's not what I'm looking for. But you can very easily see changes, big changes in data.
And honestly, you're gonna get it anyways. If this data is the way you wanna see it, you're gonna have it anyways, so for me to put it on the same document and just make another set of columns is not hard, right?
I think that's meaningful for us as a group to look at.
Because all I'm gonna do is every standard, one, two, three, four, and give you the number. Score one, score two, score three, score four, trimester one, twenty kids got this, six kids got this, four kids got this, trimester two. And we can just make sure every standard's on there. Um, and again, I'm trying to focus on ELA math intentionally. I'm not trying to ignore, um, the others, the at the elementary school, I think that that core is really important. I think we can easily do that at the middle school, do all, just the way it spits out the information, and let's just call it, you know, what it is, it's like almost ten standards at the middle school. Whereas there are fifteen standards for ELA alone at the elementary level.
And it's the same standards each trimester.
They go through it, even if there's no grade, it's just we can put in NT, you can see that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a good way to measure the growth, we can see that.
You might see it, you might not, you, but you wanna see the overall, to me, the big picture is across, because what you'll be able to do, we sorted these by reading and math. Um, what you don't see, and again, I think K is is off. Um, I must have printed it after I sorted it. Um, but if you look at first grade, like, all of the reading and writing is in the beginning. And then, um, the second page, about halfway down, is where it starts the math. So it's sorted, sorted by standard, then it's sorted by um, grade, the the score, and and um, you know, and or sorted by content first, then by standard, then by grade.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, your K is just sort of like.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I realized it as soon as I looked at it.
And and this format kind of um, parallels the testing. You know, where they, they're feeding standards.
Parallels the standards.
Standards or working towards standards, right?
Yeah, these are the standards that you're tested on when you're, you're doing.
The state testing.
I just wanna help myself understand how we're gonna frame the conversation, because the numbers are pretty small, relatively speaking. So if we, I'm just looking at first grade for, for just an example, there's as we said, seven students who have ones and twos, and and your concern and principals and teachers' concerns are, who are these students and what are we doing for them? So if, well, I think, what I heard here tonight is that if that went up to seven, I mean, if it went up to eight or nine, that wouldn't be a conversation that we would need to have, because that would be at the, at the teacher, principal.
They have those meetings already, correct?
So uh, the num- the moves I would imagine would be s- pretty small through um, all of the numbers, like, I'm not expecting a lot of students probably to have fours across the board, because that's a hard, that should be a hard goal to achieve.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just wondering, like, how we would discuss if in fact that stuff is at at your level and the teacher and principal, what we would discuss about these numbers? Um, what would people imagine we would discuss about these numbers?
For me, I'm looking at the middle of that page, demonstrate skills by applying phonics and word recognition. I'm gonna target a a couple of standards that I think are really important for reading skills, and if you can read, you probably can do math better as well. Especially on our assessments, because you gotta read a bunch of the problems, and if reading gets in the way of the math, it, that's gonna be an issue, so I'm gonna look at some different things. I mean, you can chime in, this is, I mean, you're an expert on this too, but, um, you know, you guys have have expertise as teachers, and this is that. From the standpoint of what we're gonna look at, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a little bit of extra weight on certain standards. For me, I can probably give you outliers. For me, I can probably give you outliers, when I say that, Jen, what I mean is, when. It's kind of like what we do with aspect scores, when we we get aspect scores, we would go, um, we would look at them and say. We believe that. This grade level is gonna have fourteen kids get fours, we're making our predictions based upon what we know. And then we compare and we go, those fourteen kids, they grade, they're right where they're supposed to be, we had ten kids, the taints, that weren't supposed to, what happened? And we go back and we will look at those kids, was it a fluke or was it, did their scores match what we saw on every assessment we did? That to me is what I use this for. Um, from your perspective, if you're hoping as a as a predictor, I think. And Arthur, I think, is the one that started this conversation, and I and I do appreciate the conversation about loo- looking at more data. Is that if, um, and I think this is the part of the point. If we don't just want to be judged on our aspect scores, which I don't. We need to show something else, and it's this. And when you look at this to see that we have a lot of kids that are performing well. There are some kids that are not performing well, and we know why. That's our job as educators to know that, so again, I think the conversation is meant to be short. But are there, and I might be able to tell you just from the get go, like going through and going, okay, we were really shocked about this. There are a couple of things in the middle school grades that I was a little shocked about. And we're gonna have some questions. I'm sure there's gonna be good responses, I trust our teachers, but I want to know some more information, so I think that. Kind of like how I present your data for the the behavior things. It comes and goes, you know?
Well, as you said, I mean, the goal for us collecting this data and and asking for this data was. To better inform us. Without relying on the aspect scores. Um, having a more well-rounded picture of how students in Arlington are doing. Um, and this delivers that to us, so I appreciate that. The conversation that we have as a board, I just, I'm not clear about, I guess. I don't know if I'm just splitting hairs, or if I.
No, I think it's.
See other process.
It's simple.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Should we not have social studies for grade six and chorus and.
Hey, Matt, I heard him.
What are you asking me?
I'll see social studies for grade six and.
Did they have it? It's a quarter. Yeah.
What about chorus and the grade?
Don't know.
It's fine, shit's nothing. So I real- I like this one for the, um, middle school, this is helpful for me. Uh, yes, I like that one. What I did real quick for the other ones, the other grades, is, um, tried to take note of the ones, the score of ones. And then how many students achieved the score of one, and those numbers are all low. I mean, we had a four, five, six numbers of students earned a one, a lot of times it's just one kid. Um, or four, I think maybe six was probably the highest. Um, so I wanted to know how many kids are underachieving with a one. Then I wanted to make sure we're addressing the students at the other end of the spectrum, so I looked at the fours. We have, um, for grade one. The standard for math, um, adding and subtracting within twenty, you have twenty-five kids who got a four. On that standard in the first grade, so something's going right. With adding and subtracting within twenty, like that got my attention right there, so something's going well there, you know? And then there were a few other pretty high numbers, there was twenty students with four for representing interpreting data, there's in that grade in. Particular, there were several students who earned a four on their report card for some of those math standards, so something's going right there, so. That's kind of what I was looking at, is if we have students with ones, are there a lot of them? Where are they mostly, like, major, so they mostly math, what's going on, but really those numbers are very low. Um, and I do believe they're probably picked up through intervention already, would be my assumption. Um, that doesn't mean special education, that means like, you know, one of your tiers, and then.
As long as that's a trend. Cause not just one standard will put you in special education or intervention. If we see that same trend, one, two, for several reading standards or several math standards, that's the red flag. That's where I expect the data team has picked that student up and said, we need to do more.
Yeah.
Right?
Um, and then just the fours, I mean, I wanted to know, okay, how many of them are really exceeding? We need to make sure that they're being serviced and challenged as well, so. Um, that was something else I looked at, just trying to make sure we're catching everybody and we're extending everybody, the twos, I. Just from my professional experience, I have faith that they're, um. Getting the hang of things, yeah, usually with those kids, you get them a little bit more attention and they they get it as you go along. Um, and the threes are exactly where you want them to be, so. Sometimes that is something parents don't understand, is that they're like, well, the four is the highest, that's where I want my student. But really, three means like they're exactly where they should be, they're doing everything to the best of their ability, they're really, um. Succeeded, that's what you want to see. Um, so that was something that I did right away, look for the ones, look for the fours, kindergarten doesn't have any ones or fours. So that must be, um, because it's kindergarten, and some of them are four years old, so. I have to give them, give them a minute there in the first trimester. Um, but that was just a way that I used this information for myself, just to kind of see where we are, if we have. Really high numbers, like twenty-three students who earned a one in a certain standard, then yeah.
What's going on?
Not right there, um. Or within a grade level, if you have a bunch of kids who are really underachieving, then you know, we need to look at that, so again. They talk about them all the time in their data team meetings, the administration and the, um. Staff, I'm sure are on top of this data all the time, they have, how often are there, um?
Weekly, bi- monthly, depends on the group, like, whole school.
That's just how I use this.
I also put this, I also put this in my superintendent report, potentially, like, not as a full presentation. Like, here's the data, take a peek at it and keep moving, and if there's any red flags, you can always call me if you want to ask any question. That you don't want to put, you know, in a full meeting, like, hey, can you tell me what's going on with this group, I can, you know, share some of that information.
Sounds good. Now, what did you say, you had, um, something similar for the disciplinary data or?
So I don't, but what, that's what I'm gonna create, so what I'll do is, uh, just like you see the eighth grade data. I'll do the same type of thing, I'll put the infractions down the side, uh, you know, this, except, I'll have one for piss, six, seven, and eight. And you can see the number of infractions that way and where the the number per month. So this month, CES, um, had twenty behavior referrals around the holidays, remember? Um, inappropriate language, uh, was eight referrals. Uh, so realize sometimes inappropriate language at the elementary school is calling somebody stupid. Um, you know, just not being nice, things like that. Um, there are five referrals for each of the following categories, disruption, non-compliance, physical aggression, uh, and then incidents on the bus. Um, whatever those may be. Um, and then for hall this month, we had nine referrals, there were three referrals for disrespect and three for defiance. Uh, we had one dress code violation, one referral for physical contact aggression, and one for inappropriate language. And honestly, it seemed to be a decent month at hall for, uh, as, you know, excitement around the holidays and spirit days and things like that. Um, what have you not been seeing referrals for? It's not been, uh, it's been moving along very well, so that's good. So I will keep up, I'll, uh, I I think the idea here is that. As you get data, if you have ideas about how it would be better presented for you to see, let me know, um. And it's, you know, that's the idea, so you can get a sense of the data, um. I hope you don't mind, I don't like sharing that stuff, though, on screen, it's F O liable, but I just, I don't know. All right, can I talk about food services?
Yes.
All right, the account, so, um, I worked with Stephanie Knight, our food service director, um. We said in January, we would review review our our, um, financial statement. Um, and the balance, because we had trans- transitioned to the CEP program where all students were free, had free breakfast, free lunch. Um, and that was because of the, due to the number of students that were eligible. We're receiving approximately twenty-four thousand dollars a month in reimbursements right now, that's lower than we used to get, still good. Um, what I'll tell you is with the absence of, uh, just your business manager right now. Um, I don't have a formal report for you, but I can give you the the sense of where we're at. We we know, um, from receipts, we spent about a hundred and forty thousand dollars on food and salaries since the start of this year. Um, and so with that money, our balance right now. Uh, or our balance in September was about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the food service program. I think it was higher than that, but that's what the last report said. Um, at this time, we we're estimating our balance to be around one eighty, a hundred and eighty thousand, so what we're looking at. Um, is we're estimating that we've spent an additional fifty thousand dollars. Um. To bring our balance down, because we're on CEP, if you remember, we weren't sure how our reimbursements were gonna go. My gut is, um, that by the end of the year, we're gonna be close to a hundred thousand dollars if we stay on this course. Is it a good thing to feed our kids? Absolutely. Is it a good long-term plan? Time won't tell. Because you cannot afford to continue this if we're spending fifty thousand dollars every four months out of our reserve account. Does that make sense? So we're gonna, we're gonna continue to watch that, and it's. I don't want you to think when I say it was food and staffing, we're not overstaffing, it's just normal staffing that we have. None none of that changed, none of the food ordering changed, we didn't order lobster and steak, it was just. That's the amount that goes out in a number of months, okay? So we're gonna continue to monitor that and, um. I might wait another couple of months, a few months, just to give you another check in to see where we're at. Um, similar to what we're doing for, um, the after-school program, make sure we're comfortable.
Where is the reimbursement money coming from, still the state?
Still the state, yeah, it's all part of the federal program, it's all tied together, um, that. One of the the challenges that I don't like with the program is that, once you start CEP, you cannot qualify anybody new for free or reduced. You're not allowed to change their status and power of school, which hurts somebody that might be starting the after-school program. Because we need that information to figure out their cost. Um, so we are actually using an alternate form. Where then Stephanie has to look at the calculations and, um, we're allowed to use that alternate form. And then we have to put it into the link, it's a little quirky. It's not a big deal in the grand scheme of things, the bigger deal is, we need to have, you know, financial stability long-term. If we keep at this pace, you can't stay on CEP, I'm just gonna say that.
So I'm still trying to figure this out, um. We're, okay, so we're accepting reimbursement for the kids who qualified. Um, but we're giving everybody free meals.
The, it's not necessarily the kids that qualify, they're just giving you twenty-four, about twenty-four thousand dollars, I don't know if it's. Steph is still trying to figure this out too, because we were unsure about how the calculations work.
Yeah.
Um, we were, we have received twenty-four thousand dollars every month, except for December, and we believe it was. School day based, just the number of days, your number of kids, and some sort of calculation. Um. We were getting more than that in reimbursement. Again, I think the goal of the board was, can we feed all of our kids? Can we give them free breakfast and lunch if we can for as long as we can? Um, we fought to use the money in the beginning, remember, to keep our prices down, like, this is the same concept. So to keep it free, you would have to pay anyways, you'd be paying that money down anyways. Um, but if you remember, when we made it free, and we were allowed to do that, we're no longer allowed to do that. We can use our surplus to do that, we can't do that anymore, this is the only way you can do it. So, um, we still had a ton of money, because the reimbursements, when we were paying for everybody. So, again, we're gonna continue to monitor this, but it's it's, um. What we're seeing is it looks like it's a little pricey, long. It is the hundred percent right thing to do, I think, right now.
Do you think the goal of the state government is to try to make all the conversation tonight with the legislators? Do you think the goal is to provide, provide free lunch to all children?
I think they'd love to, I don't think they can afford it. It's expensive. Keep going? Okay, facilities manager, um, we interviewed a very good candidate. Following the last board meeting, I told you I had a resume, I contacted the day after the interview, and they accepted another position that morning.
Oh.
Um. They did say that position came out of nowhere, they didn't, it was not something they were looking at, they were contacted and given an amazing offer, and they took it. So our ad is still posted, regarding the sharing of the position, the selectmen did discuss it. Um, at one of their meetings, I know they moved it to an agenda item in January under old business. Um, and I think we skipped, uh, communications tonight, but, um, by accident, sorry. There was one, and it was, uh, Jim Marshall had, he's the new, uh, chair of CIP. And he, I think, I believe chair, uh, was unanimous, CIP's vote. They voted to send a letter to, did you, did you vote?
Yes.
So they voted to send a letter to the selectman, you got the, I, uh, Brianna and I got the email, so I sent it to the full board. Basically, they're advocating for a facilities director for the town.
Shared.
No, for the town, that's what they're advocating for. Um, and so it's back on to the selectmen on their agenda, um, I don't know where that will go. I did talk to, uh, the Ashford superintendent, she shared that they are considering the position for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, they would start considering it this next year. Um, she did say that if they, if we were interested in that time, a three-day, two-day split is what I kind of said, what are your thoughts on that? She thought that would be reasonable, um. They are looking for someone who can get vendors, can, um, you know, meet with vendors, oversee projects. And do some repairs, but mainly do the other stuff, um. Their major projects you want to know over the next few years, they have solar panels coming up, windows coming up. New entrances for the lower and upper lobbies, I'm assuming those are security-based, um. What I will tell you is, I'm reporting out on facilities manager tonight, information, I suggest you wait to have any discussion on this matter. Until you get to your budget, um, morning. Okay. The still is updated to CIP, I just letting you know, um, I got an email, I am, I am on the docket for, I think, Brianna, you were invited as well. Um, for, uh, providing CIP an update on the school repair discussion on January twenty-second, that's our presentation to them. I was asked to basically come in with, just give an overview of where we're at. And review the Q and M report of of the kind of those final pages, like, what are we considering, what we talking about? Um, it is a hot topic again, I think some people are starting to get the understanding that. If the state kicks in a couple of million bucks, that, um, we have to bring a lot up to code. And it increases our our projects, so more to come on that, but, um. So that night, January twenty-second, we have a budget workshop, so I'll basically be going. From here to there to present afterwards, you're all welcome to join. Um, and then lastly, on the other, um, I was asked, now, we actually repaired the center school chimney last year out of board event funds. It was the end of the year, and we did it because we had the funds at the end of the year, and we could just do it without time, we had the time to do it. Um. The timing was right to do it, because we wouldn't have to go to town meeting, so, and it was significantly cheaper. So that project was placed into CIP funding, it was put into fund four in the plan. But because we repaired the chimney. The, I've been asked to put in a a letter back to Donna saying, please release the money, you don't need to vote on it. It's not part of your million dollars, but it was a project that was identified, money was placed for it. I think you should let that money go back to CIP, are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I will send an email, but I didn't want to send it without, um, asking you first. So that's what I have on my list. Financial report?
Yes.
All right, I'm just gonna crank it. This figure for you. Okay, so, um. Financial reports relatively consistent, um, programs one and two, very similar, um, minimal changes there. Program three again is the one we're watching, special education, um. That is, we did encumber the money for the center school teacher, that's all encumbered now. Um, what I'll tell you is the money that you transferred last time. Just remember the business office is down a person right now, things are behind, um, across the board. So the fifty thousand dollars from non-lousing that you approved, and a hundred and five thousand that you, um. Asked for the transfer from transportation and health, uh, from fringe, has not been applied to this yet, so when you see that budget. You really need to take off another hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or bring less, less negative. Um, and then what I'll also tell you is that doesn't, the excess cost is not applied to that yet. And then what I'll also tell you is that doesn't, the excess cost is not applied to that yet. Okay, so. Again, we're watching that number. Um, but those funds are not ap- applied yet. Um, Program Four, we encumbered a little bit of money for transportation for the music program. Five through eight, really minimal changes. Nine, uh, we encumbered the funds for um. The policy subscription net, the model policy subscription that we got through shipment. Uh, and then Program Ten is now aligned with our current census, so. Again, take off the fifty thousand out of fringe, apply it to Program Three, because you voted on that already. Take out the transportation funds, um, and you know, fifty thousand there and apply that to Program Three. That'll put in those counts into a different spot. So. We will continue to monitor this. Remember that I said, I thought by the end of Special Ed, by the end of the year, if everything went the way. We expected it to, which doesn't always happen, that, that number would be about seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole. But that would come back through the grants and that after all the grants and transfers, that we would have about seventy-five thousand dollars that we'd have to watch. It'd be in the whole seventy-five thousand. That's my prediction today, based upon what I know. What I will tell you since the last meeting, um, and this is a little bit frustrating. Uh, is that um, we learned that Eastcon, our RASK. Who we contract through a paraprofessional through with, um, and we also contract special education outplacement services with. And some transportation. Um, had a uh, emerg, I would call it an emergency meeting. Uh, with regional superintendents, they notified us that they are in dire straits financially. When the director came in a couple of years ago, he quickly determined that they were six million dollars in the hole. Um, and no relief coming. They have gotten it down, improved it some. But they're struggling and trying to figure out what programs to cut. I understand they've asked their administrators to take paid cuts. They're trying to get the money back. They notified us um. That they are having a mid-year fifteen percent increase in uh, outplacement tuition cost. Uh, and. There's not much you can do about it. Uh, transportation, I think, was uh, four percent. Um, so. Our cost for outplacement tuition went up. The good thing for us is that the majority of that. It does, it's not a huge impact for us and the reason why is because we're already over excess costs for the individuals that are in that, those programs. So if it was a thirty thousand dollar difference with the increase. Um, and we're getting seventy percent back, you can do the math that it's gonna cost us, you know, nine, nine thousand, something like that. So it's not terrible. It's still not. It was not a very nice phone call, I would tell you. People were not so happy. I do feel I have some empathy for the director because he did not know what he was walking into. Um, I will also say I'm not convinced that we were given all the information, because I'm. I am curious if there's more action to come, if you know any.
On a lot of our, like, students at Eastcon or just?
There is a percentage. I will not tell you the number. I will tell you that it's more than one and it's, it's um. The increase was. Not a drop in the bucket. So. That's the financial statement.
Fingers crossed that government, that state government, I saw.
Yeah, I mean, there's pitches out there to try and help them, um, because they are a RASK, uh. And we argued a bit, not argued, we, we kinda pitched something, we, we, I was on a phone call with my regional group the other day. There was actually quite a few senators and, and state reps on the call, uh, including Tammy Nuccio. Um, just letting them know, like, it would make more sense to give. There are some, some districts, Hanson is one of them, that's losing huge, huge money on ECS funding. We're getting hit over a number of years. We've been held harmless so far. We're gonna lose some money just to give some money to the rests, because they provide services to a boatload of districts. We are contracted with our V C B As through them. If we didn't have that service through them. And you had to hire a V C B A, um, big bucks and shortage area. What was the second word? She quit her, quit her board of bed job.
For the commute, absolutely.
Um, but that's, you know, the, that was one of the things that was, you know. Pitched to them and say, even if you gave some money to them to do programming. To do something that was for region without, that, what were you gonna say?
What was the second word you said? I didn't hear you. Shortage your.
Shortage area. Yeah, shortage area. I hope. I really do hope some of these outplacement places, um, and, and this is a, a little frustrating. It's kinda like the um. Watching the CEOs make record profits, you know, on electricity and then. You're gonna get your budgets this, this, um, you know, in the next couple of weeks and you're gonna look at the numbers in there and the increases and just. I hope it's not happening with outplacements where they have some folks making a lot of money. Um, and uh, we're being overcharged because it's about kids. Um, so, and it's best placement, so, we'll see.
Ten A, new business, regular meeting minutes for December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. We need a motion to accept.
Motion to accept meeting minutes for our order December twenty-ten, twenty-four.
All seconded up. Any discussion? I just had it on. Quick thing on page six, it states the next meeting date as the day of the amendments. Page six at the bottom, it says next regular meeting, the same day as these meetings are from, so it should have been today.
Oh, yeah?
January fourteenth, no big deal. Anyone else? All right, all in favor of accepting this minutes, please say aye. Samantha still there?
You should be able to unmute Samantha.
Can you hear me?
All right, motion capes. Um, next, we're gonna talk about the non-lapsing account regarding the flashing light at H M S.
Yeah, so I told you I was gonna bring this to you last um, meeting and I'm kinda, um, um. May hold this, but I just wanna give you the information. So the school's on the, the flashing light and I can actually. So I can show you what I'm talking about. It's this light here, that's on thirty-two, um. It has not been operating properly. We thought it was not getting on a solar, but it is. It just kinda, it's like a slow blink. It's not like it goes alternating like it's supposed to. It's not, it's like blink and then waits five seconds and then blinks again. It's off. So we had tried to have it replaced or repaired. Um, and we were told that the interior place, this is twenty years old. When initially went in, the state put it, and once the state puts it in, just like our crosswalk signs, they tell you that. That you now own it, you have to take care of it and you're responsible for it. So we have to replace it, um, if it doesn't work. Um, and so. Really, the, the company that, we've had a couple of companies give us some, some information. They quoted the same. Blackened light. Uh, the light itself after freight is like forty-eight hundred dollars and it doubled that for installation. So I asked Public Works to um, take a peek at it. It's obviously on a main road. It's twelve feet high. You need a boom, you need um, safety, traffic safety. So. It is working enough right now. Um, my feeling is I wanna make sure you know about this. You, I was gonna ask you to use non-lapsing funds for, but I'm, I'm kinda watching next year's budget. I'm watching this year's budget and I'd rather keep the ten thousand dollars at this point. What I, why I'm sharing this with, why I kept it on the agenda is to let you know that um, if there were end-of-the-year funds. And this is something that we have on our list, that I, this is important. Um, and when I say that. If Public Works can't do it, it's like a thousand dollars for install to, you know. For the day, right? They're doing the work for us. And the money really is around traffic, you know, management. Um, you could borrow a truck from your neighbor in town that has a boom. Um, I just felt like five thousand dollars for installation was a lot. The only thing, the installation, you'll hear this in the playground thing as well, is that the only thing with the installation is then they're on the hook for it. Um, talking to Troy, uh. This is not rocket science. It's literally a pole with wires coming down into a battery box. The directions are all there. Think it's something we can do, but. Uh, I just wanna let you know that that's something we're watching. If this dies tomorrow. Uh, you, I, my feeling is you gotta do it. What's annoying is this light flashes for like two hours a day. Not even. It flashes during our, like, seven fif, uh, seven fifteen to eight forty-five, or eight o'clock, I think. And then like two thirty to three o'clock or something like, it's not even two hours a day, it's. But it lets people know, school zone, radar sign's next, flashing beacon, like all those things, part of our safety.
Is there a radar sign inside the?
So there is a radar sign right here. So it goes, we set it up in both directions.
I know the other direction.
That, yes. We set that both directions, so there's this. Then there's a radar sign like right here, and then there's the flashing beacon for the crosswalk and it's the same thing in the opposite direction. I do think it works. It works best when our troopers out there. Not gonna lie.
I was just gonna ask, cause I, I don't travel this way very often. I was just gonna ask what the cost difference is between switching it that way versus. The radar like, like one that you have on the other side, but I didn't actually realize you had one on that side, so, okay.
Yeah, and these are programmed, um, they just get programmed in the calendar and they turn on and off automatically. Obviously, the solar twenty years ago versus now, if you look at the size of the silver cap on that. It's, you know, it's like one of those things like, well, we, you could get the parts for that. Um, they're obsolete and you're gonna put an obsolete part into something where that has other obsolete parts. For crazy amounts of money, so.
Do they give you a turnaround time on repair?
They're pretty, they're pretty quick, and so. This is to a computer guy. This is one of the things that, um, why. Although I don't like the install price, I do like them on the hook for it. Is that we had a problem with our flashing beacon for, at the crosswalk. Uh, one side was working, one side was not. One of the same companies we got a quote from came out. Sat on his, on his iPad. He did a firmware upgrade wirelessly in two minutes and walked away. And we were given a bill. The fact that he could do that though, like Steve can't do that. We need someone to make sure we can do those things, but they're pretty good. They're. Both these companies are in, in Connecticut.
So, I mean, my personal opinion is we fix it. We're gonna have to fix it down the road anyways. Just use the ten grand down lapsing and we'll figure it out later. It's a safety issue, but. Like my opinion.
Steve is trying to um, quote-unquote beat the guy up too and just get some, some, a lower rate on installation. I don't know if he'll be successful with that. Sometimes he is. Um, and, and Troy and I were having, having a conversation like, well, if we get to this, what point? At what dollar amount does it become like, yeah, it's definitely, we would recommend that, like to have them do it. Um, it's just a matter of, and you could wait on this a month and come back to it if you want. Um, and, and once you hear the larger discussion, I think you'll understand why.
If a student gets hit in the park, in the crossing the road and they, a lawyer sees that we have a faulty sign, doesn't that cause us to be more liable?
So we, we have more than one sign there. So the flat, the fact that we have a, a flashing pedestrian sign, a legal crosswalk. And um, that is an additional, it does flash, it's just not, it's.
It's slower than.
It's not the good blink, blink, blink. Certain times it is, and then for whatever reason, it slows down. It's got its own. It's got its own mood. Um, I, I don't think so. I don't think it was, it, it's not like you can't see the school. That, that radar signs is a strobe, so if you're going forty, it gives you the red strobe. Yeah, yeah. It's actually programmed. It's actually programmed slower than the speed limit is all the time. It is, because it turns back into a thirty-five or forty non-school outage. And that's why the, this sign, the, the flashing sign that we're talking about now. Um, it's only on for two hours a day, because that's all you can get from D O T will only approve.
Are there rules or laws about what you have to have, that you're spending on like a rain?
It's good to have a school, I think everybody has school zone signs. I mean, it could ju, it doesn't have to be a flashing light. You could just put a sign out that says school zone. Um, but we. Really, really like the flashing beacon sign crosswalk. Because if you're going southbound and you come over the little crest of the hill right by the front entrance, uh. I can't tell you the number of accidents we almost see every morning when we're sitting on the sidewalk down there, just for people from out of sta, out of, out of town, out of state. Um, going to Yukon, cranking along, looking at us and slamming on the brakes. You can see that beacon because it's a pirate. So anything we can do to prep people along that, um, is the reason why we need it. We're still in the works for a whole redevelopment there. It is just so slow, so slow. And the redevelopment, if you know Tallins. Um, is it seventy-four? Seventy-four in Tallinn, um, by the old bank, there's the Tru, the hardware store there. Where they've got like little kinda stone sections. There's going to be, supposed to be uh, traffic islands. Uh, pedestrian islands in front of that. They're supposed to move the sidewalk away from all school. It's in the works. We have the grant for it. Just slow.
What are we waiting on?
So it passed all the state engineers, uh, from what I understand from Mike, um. And um, the land use here, and then the, some new engineers came in and said, well, we have a better idea and. Threw it up in the air. They've spent a lot of money on it, so we're, I'm still waiting for an update. He could tell me tomorrow, like, hey, this summer, we're putting it in. I don't know.
Who, who was that again? Mike from where?
Somebody tell me Mike's last name. It's escaping me. He's out, he, he, yes, he's out of the, the land use office. Tomato, thank you, goodness gracious. Need more coffee.
Okay.
So you, you decide what you wanna do tonight. I, I mean, if you, I don't have a problem. Waiting, coming back to you in a month and seeing how it happens, but.
Did that answer to your question?
Yeah, I answered my questions, but I still want it.
Well, we, we send a monthly report as to, and when it dies, will.
If it dies, I'm.
That would be, he's already standing out there. It just, that's just what it's like.
We have a lot of solutions. They actually sell rubber ride, um. Bike strips. So like, you know, the police throw out spike strips. They're rubberized so they look like they're real deal. Steve's like, that'll slowly ready down. What were you gonna ask?
Oh, if it dies before we get to our next meeting, we still have to then wait for the next meeting to move money, or could you proceed?
Technically, I could buy it out of Board of Ed budget funds. It's just, just like the trees. It's a lot of work and I'm waiting for a six thousand dollar heating repairs at, at Hall School right now. That will leave about five thousand dollars in their maintenance account for the rest of the year. So again, Samantha Sperry, there's her comment, right? She's not saying it out loud right now. I'll say it for her. That additional ten thousand dollars that was cut out of your budget last year. Six thousand dollar repair right now for heating units, for three heating units at Hall School. That's what Steve sent me today.
Three units.
Three units that are all stuck and can have to be turned off and on manually. That's not the way you do business. So we're working on that.
Okay, so, um. I guess we need to know if, if we're comfortable holding on. For the winky-blinky the next meeting or.
And just like more solid. That's, that's my only hesitation is what's, what is the real difference between. Having them install it versus having Public Works install it? What's the cost saving?
Public Works won't bill us. I have the exact count, uh, 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 amount for the light with a, with a freight. Um, and I have the exact amount up to what he, he gave me for a quote so far.
Do we lose a warranty status or anything like that if Public Works installs?
Nope.
No, but then don't you have to pay for any repairs?
We'd have to pay for any repairs.
Warranty, if you start to have pay repair bill.
Well, how long has it been, um, not?
A while. It's been doing it, it's doing it for a while. Yeah, I would say all year.
I, I feel like. It's so close to budget, like. I think having a better informed picture of what the overall. Look is might be helpful. Um.
I don't know what you mean.
I mean, like.
You mean you wanna see what happens tomorrow night?
Yeah.
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 I'm just a bit more comfortably than we have the. This scroll on the other side. Uh they felt like they felt like that people.
Only thing.
That's the only reason I'm not. I'm not. Rush necessarily to the I'm not saying I'd go against it if we go to it on today, but just not rushing to certainly put it to the day cuz there's other means. There already.
I'm prioritizing it too right now. I mean, I I I felt like I needed to share it with you. Um and I. I mean, I'm glad to take a video of it too, so you can see kind of what it looks like cuz you can get a sense like, okay, let's just let it hang on. We can spend money on something else and. If someone's got. If it breaks and it's down and you still got another decision.
Is that the safer direction? So.
Yes, it's a straightaway. It is the it is a hundred percent.
Okay.
Uh I don't even wanna say this, but that is the direction. Like if you hit somebody, you are a hundred percent not paying attention to anything. Cuz it is a straightaway for a long time. It with a slight uphill, so. This like the person is you can see them in the road. I mean, it's. And we've got people trained pretty well. Like press. Press the crosswalk button. Cuz outside of school hours, when you are in it, when it goes back to the forty, you use that crosswalk button. We've got everyone trained to do that.
Wish I wish there could be like um. Oh goodness, a light that changes the road like highlights the road a different color coming the other direction like right in front of something. Yeah, there's something to the road when it's schools in session. So when you're coming the other direction, like if you can have a head. Cause it's house house surprise. That would be smart, like paint the road or something so people knew like, okay, that's.
We've looked at a lot of designs, a lot of changes.
There goes my oh, well, that could go into the new island to me. Well, they're doing it something from the other way. Okay, so.
You also are gonna have another conversation in the next agenda item about non-lapsing funds, just to remind you of that.
I'm I'm good with holding on personal information. What do you wanna do? You go to the back? Yeah.
Nope, that's okay. I'll be fine.
And and also.
I just have a different opinion, that's all.
That's all fine, yeah. And also giving folk permission to repair it if it needs to be repaired before we need again.
You don't even need.
Yeah, okay.
You already tried that. They said replace it.
Or replace it before.
Yeah, which I could. I could do.
But we did also need to know that because if there's funds at the end, that's gonna be on that list. So. You always do a good job of telling us those things as they're starting to.
That's the idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, blinky blinky like. We won't forget about it.
Okay, I gave you a um this is a general item one.
Eleven A old business or hundreds regarding the. Um centers.
Told you it's been busy um. Okay, so I I tried to take the quotes for you and. I basically sniffed out the sections of each quote that said what they were gonna do. Um I put down the bottom two companies that we contacted that did not have any response. We tried to get them through email, through phone, we did nothing. So. The two quotes that we have. We actually had two ums two different company names. Both came through Pro Playgrounds with the same number, which tells me it's just a branch. Um. The difference is what you're gonna notice and if you just wanna look at the second one down with one eighty-one and a two eighty-four. Okay, the difference is that Tracig, that guy's come out a couple times now and he actually. Used a tape measure and measured our playground, the area that the this port service would be in. Pro Playgrounds just said, I'll get on Google Earth. And I'll. Draw a circle around that and tell you what the square footage is who gave you a price. So. Do the square footage difference. Is simply because of that. It's not because we need more. It's just that's what he's saying. He he's what he circled. So the difference between the two. Tracig would still be a little bit cheaper. Um if they were the same s- uh amount of square footage, but it's it's there, so. Um.
Thirty percent.
The other thing that you'll notice and we talked about um surface prep is expensive, okay? And the second thing is the the thickness. So you notice that on um. If you this is a I I'm not sure how. That I trust this. Maybe I I don't know this business, but he has a three inch thickness on pro playgrounds for eight foot fall, which is typical. And then. Point five TPV thickness of rubber granules. Around the rest. I'm. Not, I don't know about you, but that doesn't seem like a lot. So. I really like how Tracig did his and basically explained like. You obviously are gonna pay more when it's thicker. And what they do is there's a section depending on the height of the playscape and around the swings being higher. There are sections that you need a bigger base. Three and a half inches. That's your fall protection, just like we do have to have a minimum depth of mulch. Ten inches of mulch, not frozen. Um. That's what this is. The areas where you're just walking. You don't need as much. It's outside of fall zone, meaning you're on top of a playscape flying off a swing. You only need two inches, okay? So. This individual basically gave you a a few options. He basically said. Option one is coming in ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars. Would be a smaller section. He's worked with us really well about price books. He couldn't tell. Um it I don't like quote number one. It leaves out the the elementary pre-K section. It does not do that section. Um. And I'm not a big fan of that. If you're gonna do this, in my opinion, I think you do it right. And because it won't happen again and blending other things together. Is harder to. Is it a lot more expensive? Yes. The next quote that he has for the one eighty-one. Is the full deal. He does all the site prep. He does all the install. It's the entire area. You get the ADA walkway to the the blacktop. I um. I really like contractors that are honest about their business. This individual. Said, look at my price is my price for product. He goes, but. I'm not near Wellington and my cost for site prep is high. He said. If you want, I will work with someone if you have someone local to do your site prep. Probably for significantly less. And then. He would just come in and do the install. Um. I like that. I think that there's pros and cons to that, but I I like it um. While I've. We've talked to Matt Johnson at Center School about this. We've gone back and forth um. There's a couple of options, things you can do here. One is um and you have a a time on this. You still have a you know, time to make these decisions. This money is encumbered under Tracig, just so you know. Okay, which you had to do because of our. Um. What you could do is just contract. We could put a simple RFP together. Um I'm not gonna post it like out in the world, but I ask local vendors. Here and I would work with this gentleman from Tracig and say, help us write the the information that needs to be done. What type of material needs to be? You know, put in, how deep do they have to dig out? Where's the material going? Um. He could help us do that. We could get local quotes and see where it's at. We might find someone that is local that can drive their machine. Down a whole farmed road literally. And do the work for us for a fraction of the cost. It's not um and then just be able to spread whatever the crushed stones. I would prefer to take that approach. We could also ask Public Works to do this in the summertime. It would be a bit of a strain because of Public Works taking vacations that the other work they have to do. Um we could ask them to help with some of it. My other thought and then I'll be quiet, sorry. Uh my other thought around this is that. The woodchips that are currently there, I actually would like to reuse. And I'd like to put them on the nature trail. So. I'm always aware of liability. I know. Sometimes it's like, is there a risk to do it? But I just have this, I'm envisioning a bucket brigade. Of volunteers that we could just scoop fill up buckets and we could move a lot of that mulch ourselves and spread it all the way down the nature trail at Center School. That has roots and bumps and. It would just be a nice walking path with mulch. With the playground mulching.
Would you get that as a subline in the quote for the site prep? Or is that mess with the RFP?
I could write the RFP. I could write the request any any way we want. If we said. Um. I don't know how accessible the whole trail is with like a a loader or you know um. A little Kubota tractor or something like it's just not super accessible. Um. It's something that we could put a mountain of woodchips on the other side of the fence and have kids work with us on an earth day. Like there's all. What's that?
That's a good idea. And I happen to know. For the most part that people that can go to tractors, my husband for example, I love to use their tractors. So. I would imagine you'd have some volunteers.
Yeah.
Can they TV fit on the drill?
Yes.
Okay.
You could pull a little thing to hold up.
So it's just like you do pick up some liability when you do stuff like that. Um. There's all obviously a great deal of community building when you do something like that um. But I think you know, you you have to be aware of like damaging equipment and things like that, but. I I like just I again, I like the fact that he said, look at my site prep is is expensive because I'm coming across data. I'm hauling a lot of equipment across the state. I have to leave it there. I can't. Work eight hours in Wellington and then drive back and do a small job at night with my equipment. I don't have it. It's staying Wellington. Um I just appreciate that. Maybe we're gonna see local people are gonna be high tip.
Now, I have a question about the other money. So. How much do we have to spend on this project?
So. They approved at their meeting. I was told eighty-one thousand. Your motion Donna wasn't there. Your motion. Um was for eighty-seven. Donna is still confident. They said at least eighty-one. They did not calculate in. The interest. So there's still a very good chance you're gonna have another seventeen thousand put on top of your eighty-one. Because it has to go to an older project. And it's very where this is the project that it's going to. Does they the way they voted, I guess. So.
Where would the money come to get up to say the one twenty-three and then whatever the site?
So you have to figure out the balance and the way your your um motion was last meeting was. Um you set up to a hundred and thirty thousand. With um at least eighty-seven thousand coming from Harpo. And if basically if it failed referendum, you would cover the difference in non-lapsing. That after. If you do it early enough. You can change the project. Me and it because if you sign a contract, I'm just gonna give you the example again. Say you sign this contract. You want to use the million dollar fund because this has been on C I P for a long time. Correct, the balance. If it goes to town meeting and it fails. And you have a signed contract, you need to figure out the where you're getting the balance from. If you wait to sign your contract until afterwards. You're fine. So um. It's just a matter of figuring out the best way to do it and how much you wanna do. If you want to, again, you need to probably see tomorrow night where we're at. Um if you want to. Wait a meeting, I could get all the quotes and information on the um. You know, what it would cost for the fail and cleaning that out. Um and site prep. And I think I could easily have that for you in February. That would still give us plenty of time to. You know, if we had to have a town meeting, it happens in March. You're closer to the end of the year, you'll know where your non-lapsing count is gonna be. The good thing about Tracig is. If you went to town meeting and it failed and you didn't have a lot of money about and you're not lapping and you're like, we just have to sign a smaller contract. You sign it when you can. You know you have at least eighty-one thousand dollars. Plus whatever interest they're gonna give you. You know you're gonna have that money. You're just doing a smaller footprint, but guess what? You're doing a footprint that you can keep the playground open. He's even willing to help us make paths if we needed to. As a significant cost of cutting savings, which I really don't like because then you still need mulch. But picture like many islands. With either grass or mulch, regular mulch around the port service. So port service around the swings. And then when you leave the swing area and the port mulch goes away, it turns into um regular mulch for a little bit and then you get closer to the playscape, goes back to port. He's willing to do type of that type of stuff. It's. You're not gonna have a ton of savings, but you would have some savings doing that cuz it's less square footage.
That's Andrew Riskwell.
It's. What we have now. The transition from woodchips to that. It's not perfect. And guess what? You gotta make sure that you and if you want kids to climb and stuff in the wintertime, you gotta have the port service.
Yeah, but right now we only have that one. If you do it that way, you're talking about you're gonna have one.
Right.
They run around that entire playground. It's gonna be.
Agreed.
And down that.
Someone digs a hole. It's yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's not the best practice.
This would give them access to the whole playground during winter.
The full amount would.
The worst case scenario. We're trying to find sixty-two thousand dollars. Worst case.
Based on what what you're.
Based on the eighty-one from New York.
Yeah.
Four hundred and forty-three. Oh, no, I'm sorry, the hundred eighty-one.
Yeah.
Thousand.
Correct. So you still have time, but I'm I'm sensing like let's figure out if we can get a local vendor.
Yeah.
I mean, look at if somebody charges us ten thousand dollars and it's. You just took twenty-eight thousand dollars off the cost of this project. That's significant. And I think ten thousand dollars might be reasonable for a local person. Just to bring their work, their stuff in and. Scoop some mulch up and dump it over the fence. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what type of stone has to go in. I think that's, you know, that's another thing. You you have to get mountains of stone and that takes time to spread. So there's there's some work to be done. But it's worth identifying, so.
And he'll provide the stone?
It's all part of the quote. If he does that, if you do the full amount.
Oh, okay. Would we for our local people, they would?
We would have to do it. Yeah, correct. Everything just keeps getting more expensive.
Okay, so we'll hear more about that.
But do we need to decide that we're moving forward with Tracig? I mean, I think it's pretty obvious, but.
You already did. Yeah, you already did through your. Yeah. We put them in. You approved the the project for up to a certain dollar amount. It's just if you wanna change that dollar amount, move it forward in the future at some point. But Tracig is in com- I wanted to give you all the quotes. You can see why I'm recommending them. Um cuz I already knew that they were the lower one. Uh but I wanted to make sure that that they were encumbered for our funds.
All right. So moving on to uh eleven B, which is the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Wellington Public School Calendar, which we have previously discussed. Finally regarding. Um the December twenty-third hack day and the market conferences um and PD there on the fifth and the sixth.
This is a hundred percent. Cleaned up. Proofread days count. Little tweaks for just like spelling things like that, adjustments. What we identified one thing coming up with uh negotiations that I wanted to share with you. Um is that in this calendar. There is no Good Friday identified. And typically. We've taken all religious holidays off this calendar. If you if you didn't figure that out, the rest rest are like federal holidays. So the 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 which is a good thing to do. Um it's just more balanced. Um if someone wants to take a religious holiday off, they can take a a personal day. They have time to do those things. But what I'll tell you is Good Friday is in one of our contracts. That they get the day off as a paid day off. My feeling is. Uh cuz I think on this calendar, it would be the third. Um if I'm right. Uh April third and what I'll say is we could easily just write it into the calendar as uh or into the contract is. And what I'll say is, we could easily just write it into the calendar as it uh or into the contract is two options. One is a floating holiday. I'm not a big fan of those, to be honest with you. Or um. You, we just put it in the contract to say it will be paid out on uh the Friday of the April vacation. It's not on Good Friday. But you would be paid out that Friday of April vacation every year. That's when you would get it for the people that have that contract. Uh, because if you, obviously if you take it away from them, you, if we negotiate it out, it's no big deal, but. I don't know that that's a good negotiating, or to be honest with you.
It actually falls during vacation.
This year.
This year. Oh, you're talking about.
Next year it doesn't. Cause this year I was asked, when are we gonna, when are we gonna do it? Like, it's not an issue this year, cause I know it's on April vacation. And you're gonna just gonna pay for that Friday, which is the same concept of what we would do in future years. Because if it was a day where we have school and we rely on that, you need to be here. We need those people here. It's the West Union, it's the non certified, it's paraprofessionals, it's office staff, custodians, nurses, they're all in that. Twelve month employees get an um that day as a paid holiday.
So do they, is it as a a religious observance that if they have it off or?
Since they've listed it as a paid holiday in prior years, it's probably been there forever.
So if people observed it as a religious holiday, they would still be out anyway?
They still have the ability to do that. Very few people do that. Very few.
I mean, I'm assuming that's the case. I just.
Yeah.
When is that contract up?
We just got the negotiations notice in the mail, so it's, we need to.
So transition into a floating holiday so people can use it if they want to, or they?
Not this year. It, July one twenty five is when we.
Right, right, contract.
So if that were what was negotiated, they could use the floating holiday wherever they want.
Yeah.
Um, the good thing about that is it's not, um, it's not everybody on the same day, right? The good thing about the April vacation on this side and this office is. We know we pay all our twelve month employees this day off and it's set and it's not a day where we now have to cover subs, cause there's a cost to that. That's why I like the April vacation, the Friday. So that's, when you look at this calendar, that is the only thing that's left in here that. If you want to put it in, as a, as a holiday, you could put it in. And then you'd extend out June eleventh would be your last day. That is not my recommendation.
What are the other districts doing?
Are they on a different vacation issue?
The only one that's going to school in our region is Ashford, or is not going to school, I understand is is Ashford, but. Yeah, and so does uh Mansfield.
So is Easter sporadic so that there would be times when we couldn't use?
You're asking a lot of personnel.
No, it is. It's.
I mean, it seems like if we kind of put our vacation.
No, I sometimes guess.
It's also good for families too that are traveling to.
Well.
To be able to have that Easter Good Friday vacation with. For traveling with families.
I understand that, but you could say that is true for any religious holiday. And there are none other, no other religious holidays on this calendar.
Okay. So I don't understand why we. Like, how is that a negotiating um opportunity if the religious holidays are off the calendar?
Because it's still, still paid day off, so they're not, they're not gonna give up a paid day off. You have to make a.
The dates are listed, just like in my contract, my contract lists which days I get off and theirs is listed the same way.
So that's the only religious holiday that is a paid day off?
It says Christmas and.
But they're never in session, obviously, so.
But they can use a personal day. So if there's.
On other days.
And those, you could use a personal day and have it be a paid day off.
Correct. That's the reason I really do like not having religious holidays, because then it does not. We've had a a teacher in the past, uh, who was Jewish. And asked, do I get this day off? And the answer was no, but you do have personal days. Or, and I would even have let them use sick days if they want to, um, because I understand that. The way Mansfield has done this, they've done a very similar approach and I like it, um, is they are so much more diverse than we are, obviously. Um. They've taken all religious holidays off to kinda keep everything off the calendar, but on the back of their calendar. They wrote down every single religious holiday that they know of. And when it is on it. And it is what it is. Those kids are out those days, they're excused. Um. But it's still a school day for everybody else.
Yeah, yours looking to a downside. We're looking at that last meeting with the entire list.
I know Sharon liked it. Yeah.
Have you spoken to the president of that bargaining unit? Let's see if they would do an MOU or anything, or you're not worried about it at all?
I'm not worried about you. Yeah, cause this year doesn't matter.
Okay.
Cause it's during April vacation. They just are gonna get paid for.
That's right.
A day. Yeah, it's, next year it's, it's where we have to. And it's not gonna happen that way every year, but I think if you write it into the contract to say, you're just gonna get paid on that Friday, that's when you'll, you'll get. It, you just, as long as you don't change the days, the number of days they're getting paid off. That's typically what they like. Unless you said, well, I'm gonna pay you for Christmas on a different day. No, that, you know, that's not the way it goes. They, this is one that I think they're gonna be flexible around. As long as we keep the paid holiday in there. I'm not worried about that.
And didn't we change the language on professional days to include? And to include some of those religious holidays? Maybe not in.
I don't know if that's in this unions. It might be in the teachers union something.
That's what I was thinking.
Other than that, I think this, this, um. I actually kinda like, I know we came back to this calendar a bunch of times, but it was, it was, uh, I think it was helpful each time, so.
Very simple. Do we have to approve it or?
You do. I mean, you don't have to do it tonight, but I think it's, it's at the time to do that.
Um, I moved to approve the Wellington Public Schools Calendar twenty five, twenty six. Any further discussion? Ready then? If you're in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Any answers, if there's one, otherwise.
She gets Sam?
I don't know. Do we have her on there?
See if she's still here.
She's still there.
Sam.
She isn't good around. Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, I am, the twelfth is present to speak. We don't have anyone in person here, so if you're on nine, unmute yourself or?
You can unmute yourself. Give me one second, sorry.
Raise your hand.
Now you can unmute yourself.
They must be waiting for our next meeting. Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Next time. Okay, new business? What are we doing here with this potential executive session?
You're coming back to discuss uh the adjustment that we discussed last time for my contract. So you'd have to vote, make a motion to go into executive session to discuss superintendent's contract and invite me.
Second. So we will be entering executives. Oh, vote, sorry. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Sam, are you still there?
Yes, aye.
Alright, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, we will be moving into executive session at nine.
So nine twenty, if you're on.
Oh, there you go.
Good.
Yep.
Alright, we are returning from executive session at nine twenty PM. Is anyone moving on to? I'm moved that we had. The discussed SIP day buyout language to the superintendent contract. Second. Great. If you're in favor of this motion, please say aye. Aye. We need you Samantha.
You don't, but if she's not, if she does.
Okay, we're gonna, um. Alright, motion passes then. Okay, agenda item fourteen is our comment. Did anybody have anything that they wanted to say?
We are not going to meet again before the Super Bowl, so let's go. Meet tomorrow. Now they just beat the Steelers and they're playing Kansas City of the Texas, who's gonna raise and stand the Bills.
Oh, there's, there's always, they'll be very excited.
But football. Alright, good.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll see y'all tomorrow at five thirty.
Need a second.
Yeah, amen. Second.
Thank you.
In favor? Good. Alright, good night everybody.
Nine twenty three.